Hello, Allison. Good to have you tonight as well. I see that we have our entire board. It is exactly six o'clock. In fact, it just hit 6:01. And so we will officially begin our board meeting tonight. And as always, we'll take a moment to show our honor and respect and really our gratitude toward the men and women and the families as well who serve in our military. And it's such a privilege for us to support our military families who literally watch over, care, and support all of us in our country. And so we will have an opportunity to stand and show that respect and honor in a moment of silence. Then after that, we will ask you to join with us in the pledge of the United States as well. So please stand with me in honor of our military personnel, their families. Join with me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic which stands
A nation under God.
God.
Visible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. May be seated. Well, it is exciting tonight to be able to have an opportunity to acknowledge our amazing Classified Employees Week. And I can think of Carol, who often has said that her appreciation goes down to each bus driver that picks up a child, each person that makes sure that our kids are able to get to in school and back to school. And so we've always appreciated the classified employees who really do invest in the lives of our children and set them up for success in so many ways. And so paras and engineers and janitors, each and every one of you. It's not just the work that you do. It's the fact that you're investing in the lives of our kids. We're so grateful that those works of love are very important to each and every one of us and they they don't go unnoticed, but they often go unthanked. And so we're grateful for an opportunity to specifically tell you thank you for all that you do. So we recognize you and we appreciate you. So please hear us say that. Board, is there anything else you want to add? We're in agreement. All right. So now we have an opportunity to hear from our Lakewood or City of Lakewood Council member, Linda Farin. Linda, you are able to share these great important insights so that we know how better to collaborate with the city and be great citizens. But we always want to tell you thank you and to the city council as well. Again, we really honor people who serve in the fact that you're serving in this capacity, you and the city council. We know it's not easy. We know that at times, just like with the classified, it kind of probably feels thankless, a lot of hard decisions that you make, but just hear us at least say thank you and that we're excited to hear from you tonight.
Well, thank you for your thanks. And I wanted to turn right around and thank you for the work that you do. And as I was reflecting on my 14 year old, who is an eighth grader currently studying from her bedroom, but normally would be at Hutloch and been in contact with some of her teachers through the pandemic and they're just working their tails off. And now with the new switch to hybrid, they're they're working so hard and trying to make sure that each learning type, whether their kids are in person or their home or switching back and forth, whatever the case may be, they're working really hard to accommodate everybody's learning styles and everybody's particular situation. And all the kids are a lot of the kids are struggling and they're just really, they're doing, they're doing God's work. And I thank each and every one of them. And I thank you for supporting them through this because it starts at the top. So, so thank you. Just a couple of things tonight. I wanted to make sure that you have on your calendars, September 18. That is when we are going to hopefully do a lot of in-person celebrating for the city's 25th anniversary. As you know, the city had its official anniversary at the tail end of February, but we're not gonna, we're not gonna party now while while we can't actually, you know, we get together and party. So we're gonna push it off to the fall and hope that things are better by then. And I have sat in on some of the planning committees meetings and let me tell you, they have got some amazing stuff for us, including partnerships with the library and West Pierce Fire and just just some amazing things that will happen, not just on that day, but activities that will start probably in May and continue on through on through September. So super exciting. Stay tuned. It's exciting for me that that we continue to see her in Lakewood Economic Development Interests. You've probably heard at some point that REI is interested in some space in Lakewood and they've reaffirmed that interest in perhaps a 30,000 to 60,000 square foot space. And now they're interested in our Lakewood Landing project, which is near the near the Sound Transit Station. And we're actually going to be learning more more about that. The Planning Commission has some recommendations for us that we'll be hearing about tonight at our study session. So I love REI. And so it's fun when a name brand could possibly come to town. On the construction side, you will see some sidewalk work and some other street improvements start going on here shortly on Lakewood Drive between Flett Creek and Silicon Boulevard. And I did want to make a note that the speed limit is going to be dropping to 25 miles an hour at the contractor's request through there. I don't actually have the dates on about when that is going to end, but it's going to be starting here pretty soon. Good news, our sales tax collections through December of 2020 exceeded our expectations, our budget by 12.4%, 12.4%. Year to date, the collections for 2020 are are down 0.1% comparatively to 2019. But I believe so far in 2021, they're they're already beating our very conservative projections. So the economy is slowly picking up and we're trying to make gains in some area, even though some areas are still seeing some difficulty. We're going to get a full accounting for 2020 at our April 26 meeting. So I'm sure you'll be hearing more about that. And I'd like to close out tonight by by thanking Superintendent Banner and your staff in working with us and your commitment as a board on the joint resolution that we're putting together, expressing our commitment to valuing diversity, equity, and inclusion. And we will be discussing the draft tonight at our city council meeting at some point during the meeting. And if if we're ready to move ahead, it might just show up on our on our regular agenda next week. We're very excited to move this forward, very excited to to commit publicly and partner with you on this journey to a more inclusive and equitable future for the city of Lakewood and its citizens and students. So I just really wanted to express my thanks for our for our joint commitment to making a commitment. And I'm excited to see what the next steps will be. Do you have any questions for me?
Well, thank you. First of all, thank you very much for sharing. And then I see that Carol has a question. So go ahead, Carol.
Linda, do you know when the farmer's market will start up again? And is it going to remain it? I was asked this question just yesterday. Is it going to remain at Fort Silicon? Are we going to try to move it back to, you know, the street that we that was kind of first planned for the market? Do you have any information on that?
I do. They were hoping to move it to Colonial Plaza at some point in time, but for this season, we're sticking with Fort Silicon Park. We're sticking with Fridays. So it will be, I believe it starts, let me look at my calendar here. I believe it starts on the 21st of May.
Okay.
I will confirm that. And it will be, the hours will slightly vary this time. They're starting it a little bit earlier and ending it a little bit earlier. So it'll be 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM. Friday, Fort Silicon Park. And we're going to be doing quite a few more movies this year. As long as the case counts are down and we can, you know, things go well, we're going to be adding a lot of movies. Some some activities on Fridays and then some activities on Thursday nights. So the park is going to see a lot of activity this year.
Well, the comment was they really appreciated how slick it was. There was parking there. There was open space. People really were surprised at how much they enjoyed having it down at the park. It just, the access was better. They liked it. And I thought, God, we built that beautiful center over there and you know, but they liked it. Citizens actually liked it.
Deputy Mayor Wayland will not let us not find a use for that wonderful space.
Good. Perfect. Thank you, Linda.
Absolutely.
So now that the board has helped you decide that you need to have two farmer markets as opposed to just one, I'm sure you'll be able to gain a lot of help from that. So
Exactly.
All right. Any other questions from the board? If not, we would certainly just tell you thank you and appreciate you. Look forward, as you said, along this journey, we know, we really don't know the exact speed of which things move. But we're just grateful that we're moving in the right direction and that we're doing it collaboratively. So thank you for that.
Absolutely. Have a good, have a good evening.
You're welcome. We're now going to move to the next section of our board, which is public comments. I'm just going to remind the community that the way we do public comments now has changed a little bit because of the fact that we're virtual. And so basically you have a right as a community to share your insights, thoughts, or concerns with the board. You do it through email and we need to be able to receive it by a half hour prior to this meeting so that we can process it correctly. And there was one that was shared. It was actually a week ago or more, but it was in line with a board workshop. And of course, we're workshops, we don't do public comment. We wait for the board meetings. And so I'm going to go ahead and read that at this time. It is an email that was sent to us by Ms. Tanisha Lyons on February 22 stating, hello, hello all. I'm writing again to request that the Clover Park School District School Board meetings are recorded and posted for public access. In the district's quest to become an equitable district, the district must maintain a level of transparency that builds trust with the community they serve. The bridge to building a community means providing access to families in the community who may not attend school board meetings due to employment or other obligations. In doing so, the district creates a sense of accountability for board members and belonging for community members. Others, local districts and city councils all post their meetings on YouTube to be accessed later. Clover Park School District is the only elected group in the county that does not provide transparency for its constituents. I strongly urge the district to make that change immediately. Best, Tanisha Lyons. And so we always genuinely appreciate being able to hear from our community. And when we read a person's email and or even hear them speak at a board meeting, we don't enter into dialogue with them because we're always very careful to go and do the research that's required to make sure that we respond accurately. And of course, we do it in a timely manner as well. And so we don't enter into a dialogue every now and then. We may ask a clarifying question just to make sure that we are getting the information that an individual is asking us to respond to. And in this case, I just want to acknowledge that I'm going to ask Superintendent Banner that if you would do a clarification as we reach out to Misses Lyons, because in her letter to us, it says that basically other local districts and city councils all post their meetings on YouTube and that we're the only district that doesn't. And so I, I know that that's not accurate just because I'm aware of other districts and stuff. So if we can clarify, you know, what she means by that, that would be helpful too, so that we make sure that we respond correctly. So that is the only the only public comment that we had. And again, we appreciate that. And we also really do want to create an environment that gives people access to who we are and what we're doing. So thank you for that. In our next item for a school board is an opportunity that we get to have reports from our superintendent. So Superintendent Ron Banner, would you please at this time, share your reports with the school board?
Thank you, President Dr. Schaefer and Board Directors. I appreciate being able to be here with this great team. I will begin my report by reiterating our gratitude, our great gratitude for our classified personnel. This is Classified Employees Week and we like to celebrate our classified employees year round, but this is their week. And so the district office will be doing a few different things as we recognize their great contribution to the work. These valuable employees, we really could not do what we do without them. And so I just will reiterate, thank you very much to each of you for everything that you do. I will discuss a little bit about vaccinations. Last week, the governor reclassified education staff into the 1B tier one phase of vaccinations. Our district has distributed additional information to staff on how to find and schedule open appointments to get their vaccination. Local providers like St. Clair's Hospital and Seymour Medical have reached out with focused opportunities specifically for Clover Park School District Education Staff and our HR department, who's taking the lead on scheduling those or getting folks to get into those open slots of vaccination times is working feverishly to get information out. OSPI has indicated that education staff should continue to reach out to their personal medical providers for appointments while OSPI finalizes the logistics in their partnership with Kaiser Permanente, which will also be focused on education staff. The amount of vaccine continues to be the primary variable in this process. And so you can only give out what you have. And so appointments open up and it's really important that as you go to those links that you continue to go. If there's nothing open, that you continue to go, continue to go. It's you have to be resolute in that process. The district continues to stand ready to support the Department of Emergency Management as well as Tacoma Pierce County Health Department as a vaccination site if we are requested to do so. With regard to parent and community engagement, this past week, along with several district staff members and administrators, I attended a celebration of life for one of our students who sadly passed away. It was was an honor to be asked by the family to share a few words on behalf of the district. With regard to parent and communication, parent communication and information activities, this past couple of weeks, we did hold virtual hybrid in-person learning informational events for both middle school and high school parents. Parents who were not able to see these events, they have been posted on our district YouTube channel for those parents who weren't able to attend. I want to thank all of the staff involved in supporting those events. The district has loaned the portrait of Ivalis Mann to the Lakewood History Museum. Mann helped to establish the district in the 1920s and her portrait was displayed in the foyer at Mann Middle School from the opening in the 1960s until it was demolished, giving way to the Thomas Middle School construction this past year and a half. Tomorrow, I'm pleased to say that I will be at JBLM, attending a portion of the First Lady's visit to our base. The district is honored to be invited and we stand ready to provide any information at the request of the First Lady and or her team. With respect to recruitment and retention, on February 24, the District Human Resources Department hosted a virtual educator network and job fair via the Zoom platform. An amazing event went off flawlessly thanks to a lot, a lot of support. We had 69 potential candidates attend. Forty-two percent of those candidates were candidates of color. And I want to say thank you to Executive Director Lori McStay and her staff, as well as all of the departments that contributed to a really, really nice event. With regards to student achievement, we have a student at Clover Park High School. We're proud to say that Gloria Araha Ruiz has been accepted to Amherst College. And Gloria is actually in a good, has a good problem. She's waiting on a couple other, a couple of Ivy League schools to determine if she's gotten into those as well. So congratulations to Gloria and all the folks that have helped her move to this point. Tonight, we will have a combined report. So that last piece concludes my report. But we will have a combined report from the district's Special Education, Career, College Readiness, and Teaching and Learning Departments on inclusionary practices in a multi-tiered system of support. Our presenters will be Director Michaela Clancy from Special Education, Director Diane Carver from Career and College Readiness, and Director Suzie Kontos from Teaching and Learning. With that, I will turn it over to that great team.
All right. Thank you, Board, President, Directors, and Superintendent for the opportunity to present work that we've done collaboratively. Let's see, I just got to show the right screen. All right, there we go. We'll answer any questions you have at the end of the presentation. Through our presentation tonight, we'll be connecting the district improvement plan and four pillars to the work and professional development through WASA and WASA that we have received. We'll also share where we have seen initial success with inclusionary practices in our English language learning program and will discuss how the college and career readiness department is working with special ed department on inclusionary practices. The classroom provides an excellent opportunity for differentiated instruction, which engages students on a variety of choices regarding content, process, and products of instruction while supporting individuals' skills, interests, and learning styles. Inclusive instruction fosters future leaders through related class activities by placing students in workplace context where students receive mentorship, reserve leadership in action, and by empowering students with authentic leadership roles. It allows students to participate in an area of instruction that interests them using their specific interests and learning preferences and academic strengths to do their best work and their best self in order to be their best self. It also engages lifelong learners and real life connections to their area of study and understand the purpose and outcome of their efforts and facilitates opportunities so students can take pride in their work, develop collaborative skills, which heightens motivation, interest, and ambition. The purpose of this slide is to acknowledge that this initiative is contained within our district improvement action plan. When we developed the plan, we included the strategies of multi-tiered systems of support, MTSS, and inclusionary practices and effective instructional practices. The words in bold point out the interconnectedness of the work. Not one department or school owns this work. The work is collaborative for those involved and for those who it will impact, it will be lifelong learning. Inclusive education supports all students by using high leverage teaching techniques to improve academic outcomes. Multi-tiered systems of support, MTSS, Universal Design for Learning, UDL, specifically designed instruction, SDI, and culturally responsive teaching, CRT, when used in all classrooms, will help all students learn in ways that work best for their individual learning needs. MTSS is a collaborative umbrella for the work we have reported on since the start of the school year. Under this umbrella, you examine and improve academics, behavior support, social emotional resources, instructional practices, and family and community engagement. All these concepts are nestled within one another. I'll now turn it over to Dr. Clancy.
Can everyone hear me okay? Oh, good. So thank you, Deputy Superintendent Laba. Good evening, Superintendent Banner, Dr. Schaefer, Board Directors. I'm incredibly excited about this opportunity you're giving us to share work that we've been really working on for two years. So thank you. So this slide really defines our inclusionary practices within that multi-tiered system of support in Clover Park. And it outlines briefly the mindset shifts we're making through this collaborative initiative. Inclusionary practices are really just an extension of our equity work. They give us an outline for the how of our next steps, though, to provide access to that rigorous grade level core content instruction for all of our students, truly all of them. And you'll also see this throughout our slides. Inclusive practices benefit all students because it utilizes high-impact teaching strategies. Our students with disabilities, some of our, you know, our students who are English language learners, they need those. They absolutely have to have those high-impact strategies. But those strategies benefit all students. And so our students also, through this process of inclusion, they experience belonging, value, meaning as full members of their community. So belonging really becomes that outcome of the work. I have a purpose here in my classroom. I am fully included in my classroom. And extensive research shows that when students are provided the right supports to access rigorous core instruction in general education, they make significant improvements. And again, it's all of our students. Next slide. Please, Brian, thank you. So when students, students with IEPs in particular spend 80, 80 to 100% of their time in the regular educate, in the general education classroom, they develop better working habits, improve self-esteem, they're more attentive, they have improved social confidence, and they also have more diverse friendship networks. That's true for all of our students, as I mentioned before. But we do this through a multi-tiered responsive system of instructional development, designing that instruction. That's probably the most important part, support, and then intervention as needed. And we use those high-impact strategies that Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent Laba just described, universal design for learning, specially designed instruction, and then culturally responsive teaching. And this builds the toolboxes of our teachers to provide access to all of our students to make sure they're not just in that classroom, but also making progress in that rigorous curriculum. Okay. Brian, thank you. I love this slide because it really shows the evolution of our interdepartmental understanding and our continuum in Clover Park around inclusion for all of our students over time. And so this was just, we are part of a WASA and WASA grant. And this was shared at our recent training. And it just mirrored Clover Park's trajectory of inclusionary practices. It outlines how we evolved in our understanding over time for students who are English language learners, our students with disabilities, even our students who are highly capable and our career in technical education over time. And then as our understanding and skills developed, we've been better able to provide our students the supportive learning environment. That's what we control. And then the instruction that they need to really thrive. So this sort of shows the history of inclusionary practices over time. Many of us are still familiar with exclusionary practices where most of our students with disabilities were educated in institutional settings. And then we've moved forward where we had separate programs, but they were included. And then we've had, for the most part, in the last, oh, I'd say 20 to 30 years in terms of the law and what we've provided, integration. So our students have been in those same classrooms as appropriate. But we are evolving now in our understanding of a supportive and learning environment and the instruction they would truly need to thrive and be full members of their classroom communities. So we've really sort of evolved in those 30 years of inclusionary practices to parallel systems where especially our students, and it was our students who are English language learners as well, with Director Kontos, we'll discuss in a moment. But we had two essentially environmentally segregated sort of systems. And now we're really working on the tools to bring our students into that full membership of their classroom community. And how do we do that? Okay. So as we noted in previous slides, the initiative So, as we noted in previous slides, the initiative and our work with MTSS truly does also align to our four pillars of student success. So, inclusive education provides tools for lifelong learning, collaboration, character development, and leadership for all of our students. And this quote spoke to me, I've used it in several of our slideshows with our teachers now, because we truly do not know what the outcome of a student can be. We know where they are right now. We know what cognitive scores, for example, they bring to us as a student with disabilities. We do not know their true capability. And so, I just wanted to share that quote that we've shared with our teachers with you through this work. John Hattie's work, which we've mentioned to you in many other slides on effective educational practices, tell us that our belief in our students, particularly regarding their ability, has a significant impact on their outcomes. So, our inclusionary practices, they provide those tools to create that supportive learning environment with, again, high rigor, high expectations for every single student. Okay, Brian? I could say so much more. And I know that we have limited time. I want you to know I'm restraining myself. But there's so much more in these notes, and I'm looking forward to just walking through the journey with you. So, we are, again, part of a grant, several of them, one from OSPI, one from WASA and WASA. And that's part of why you're getting an update tonight. We're very excited about those grant opportunities. But we wanted to share this slide in particular with you because as we did our core analysis of what we needed to do to move forward as a district in this work, we realized that our outcomes were really our systems, our beliefs, our skills were where we needed to focus. And as we started focusing originally on this grant, the Inclusionary Practices Grant in our, one of our secondary schools, we opted into that process early. And we looked at the individual sort of outcome data of our students. We realized we have a systems-level problem. And that's what has led to the very collaborative initiative that you're hearing about tonight. So, just wanted to share those areas with you. Okay. Brian, I think there's one more slide. So, I've mentioned these a few times. We started our work, and this is actually two years into this work at this point, started in small steps, one middle school area, but our OSPI Inclusionary Practices Grant started at Lockburn Middle School. It was provided by OSPI that offered us the opportunity to start there, and we took that. And then, we also started some efforts in what's called Universal Design for Learning about same timeframe, and they've definitely accelerated with our move to one-to-one technology through this last year, which has been exciting, again, an opportunity we wouldn't have had without the pandemic. I appreciated Dr. Schaefer's words earlier. And then, we this year have been granted the WASA WASA Leadership Grant for our leadership team to attend, that grant leadership team to attend training with two national consultants in these areas, which have been incredibly exciting. Some of those slides show some of the graphics from those trainings. We're also working in with the Puget Sound ESD for some intensive training of both our district special education committee, which includes administrators, our consultant teachers from both teaching and learning and special education, our CTE supervisor and director. And then, we have an intensive coaching session with our consultant teachers and supervisor from those areas as well, where we're doing additional training with Puget Sound ESD with these grant funds to really deeply understand how to support our teachers as they develop this toolbox. And then, from there, Suzie, I think this is where we transition to your portion.
Great. Thank you, Michaela.
You're welcome.
So, good evening Superintendent Banner, Dr. Schaefer, and Board of Directors. So, our inclusionary practices work has been folded into our district, our district MTSS leadership team, which also is supported through another grant, our School Climate Transformation Grant. And we're working to create fidelity within a tiered support system for both academic and behavioral programs across the district. So, this group meets once a month to discuss and align universal supports for students across the district, focused on the whole child, and to create a documentation process across schools to ensure that inclusionary practices are embedded at all of our tiers. And then, this work is further, is further continued into our Academic Improvement Committee, where it's aligned yet again and embedded into the district's equity work, ensuring that all students have universal access to grade-level appropriate instruction with individual student support, and that teachers have the resources and professional development necessary for student success. Next slide, please, Brian. Thanks. So, the ELL program and CPSD is just one example of inclusionary practices currently being implemented in the district. At the elementary level, students receive their language acquisition support services when they receive their daily writing instruction. ELL teachers go into the classroom during students' writing time to support their writing process through a listening, speaking, reading, and writing language acquisition continuum. This allows ELL students to be exposed to the same writing standards and high-level academic language as their grade-level peers, while receiving the needed language support to increase their content knowledge. At the secondary level, we have a handful of teachers that are duly certified in both a specific content area and ELL. This allows ELL students to be placed in classrooms with their same-grade peers and a teacher that can provide both content expertise and language support. Teachers then rely on a co-facilitation model in which the general education teacher partners with the ELL teacher to meet the unique needs of our diverse learners. So, as Michaela mentioned earlier, our CCR program is another example of how the district is putting inclusionary practices into practice. Director Carver is going to share more details about this program.
Thanks, Suzie, and hello, everyone. Thanks for allowing us to be here today. I wanted to share with you that the district career and college readiness team is currently attending professional development on inclusionary practices that will be shared eventually with all of our CTE staff through future professional development sessions. As you know, CTE with foundations in workforce development is well-positioned to ensure that all students have the opportunity to show evidence of learning in a variety of ways, including demonstration and participation in the workforce. In order to ensure that all students have the opportunity to achieve a graduation pathway that fits their goals, we are creating a CTE pathway designed to meet the needs of some of our special education students. The class called Career Choices will help students explore careers and practice basic workplace skills. Then, students will experience the workplace and earn high school credit through a work-based learning experience. The two-credit pathway will be taught by special education certified teachers who are also working toward a CTE certification. And now, I'll hand it back to Brian.
All right. So, thank you. Tonight, we provided a snapshot of our implementation of MTSS inclusionary practices and provide you all a couple examples of putting inclusion into practice. The four of us now can answer any of your questions.
Brian, yeah, thank you for the presentation. I just wanted to acknowledge upfront that it really is exciting to see what was communicated to us. Not only in information, we got the information in our agendas and got to look at it. But I just want to say, Superintendent Banner to you and Brian Laba to this team, it really means something when you hear it shared with the, just the passion and the just genuine love and concern for each and every child. So, that came across. Sometimes, policy sounds good, but it, when you can see it in the heart of people, it just feels better. So, I just want to say that and, of course, allow the rest of the board to ask their questions and share their comments.
Carol?
I want to certainly agree pretty much everything, with everything that Marty had to say. And I know that to condense this into a, to a report, when I know we could hear much more and we're all interested in much more. So, incredible job, well done. What I'm going to say, I'm not asking, I have a question. I'm not asking for this as, to implement it. I'm just asking for information. On the putting on this, first of all, let me say, I also love the mindset as a blueprint for success. That is just, that says it all. And I hope, that is, that was very exciting. So, I really appreciate it. Putting inclusion into practice, some schools, and I understand COVID has changed everything, and who knows when we're going to go back, so I truly am not asking for this. If, is a practice of this, does this, would this, or could this, might this, or might it not actually, in fact, lead or lend itself to some peer-to-peer learning between, you know, with the multi, with the MISs kids? And certainly not during COVID, but I know school districts have tried this, especially in ELL situations, and they've had success. And I just didn't know if that's ever, is it on the radar? Is it, we can't even fathom because of what we've all, what we're all going through? What is?
What is? On your answer, answering you big, could be a Michaela, Suzie Tossa. Suzie, you want to start?
Sure. So, pre-COVID, that was definitely part of that inclusionary practice, right? That they were having peer conferences and shared writing, particularly at the elementary level. So, there was a lot of peer interaction, kind of what we call oral rehearsals, if you will, before they would do their writing. They would, they would rehearse it orally with their peers so that they, you know, we say it first and then we write it. And so, there was a lot of that pre-COVID, hopefully, right? Like you, like you're saying, we can go back to that at some point. But without a doubt, that is, that is a significant piece of inclusionary practices.
Okay, so possibly something to look forward to when we're?
Yes. And Suzie, did I, I don't mean to?
No.
Okay. And Suzie's had, our, our ELL inclusion has created some real amazing success stories in terms of our, and I'm just going to to her home, just the outcome data that we saw change with what happened there.
Right.
I'll also say during COVID, for our students with disabilities, we actually saw a great deal of inclusionary practices in our online learning. In fact, it, it was pretty amazing. Some of our students who, for various reasons, may not have been able to engage in the same way. And that, I think, is an, an area where now they know they can access, and we've learned more about what they've needed to be able to access. And we're not going to change that for them. I've got two buildings that are working on that very intensely in terms of making sure that we continue what we've seen with online learning. So, I don't, I wouldn't say that it stops, Director Jacobs, it really didn't, which I think is great. And then, we absolutely do, I mean, good universal design includes that peer-to-peer. It's part of that process very specifically. In fact, we had one strand that is just about that in some of our intensive coaching trainings. We haven't made it all the way through the module, but yes.
Okay. Well, thank you. It is a goal to look forward to then. Thank you.
Paul? Thank you. I concur with the comments made so far. I do appreciate your enthusiasm, your whole team.
Paul, I'm having a little hard time hearing you. Could you turn up your volume, please? Thank you. We just don't want to miss what you're saying.
Bear with me for a second.
If you can, yeah, you're, it says that you're on mute now, Paul. If you could unmute. There you go.
Is, can you hear me better now?
Is there a way to just turn up your volume by any chance?
I've turned all the volumes up as loud as I'll go. Still not good enough?
You know, we can hear you. It's just very difficult to hear you. I'm really sorry for that.
Okay.
Well, maybe if you just bring the microphone piece up your mouth, we might be able to hear you.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I'll hold it in front of my mouth. Let's see, on slide, it's packet seven. I don't know how you guys are doing it. I don't have the actual PowerPoint slide. It's where you had the three goals. Ensure equitable inclusion. Help me understand that definition, please.
Michaela?
So, equitable inclusion, meaning making sure that our students who, for my focus, our students with disabilities, but it really, again, our students, our English language learners are included in our core content and our general education instruction. And to do that, we need to make sure that we're providing them, for lack of a better word, onramps and supports and really understand what the purpose of them being in that core content and grade-level content is for them and making sure that they're making progress in that core content. It also impacts our students that need extension. It's the same on either side. So, equitable inclusion, we've, we've, again, if you go back to the slide with the dots, there has been more of a parallel system of instruction. And we want to bring that, we are bringing that system together because we know it benefits all students. Does that help?
It does. And we'll maybe get more clarification as we go through your slides. I got some more questions, so maybe.
Sure, absolutely.
But, but that makes sense. I, I like the the word picture you did with the on-ramp. That, that, that makes sense because an on-ramp gives people a chance to speed up and get into the flow of traffic. And I think that's, that, that's a good picture for me. So, thank you. The I, on your, on your next slide, inclusive education, the students feel a sense of belonging. I, I can't tell you how much that means to me. I think if, if you don't feel a part of it, it's hard to be anything. So, I'm glad you included that piece on there. But the, the problem, you know, when I talk to people in the community, sometimes when we start talking about some of these subjects, people get concerned that we're, we're going to have equal outcomes. And, and, you know, you know, how do you do that? But I think you've, highest expectations for all students. So, it's not necessarily equal. We're wanting the best for each student. So, I, I think that was a really good statement there. And, and I agree that we, we're all different. We're diverse learners. And, and, and I think you pointed that out on that slide, too. And so, you know, how do you do that? I mean, people have heard me say that from here, since I've been on the board, I'd like to see an IEP on every child. I know our board hasn't done that, nor has a district done that. But when it, if, if you had an IEP on every child, or if a teacher just did it in the back, on the back of a napkin, they would know every student, and I think that makes a very healthy learning situation for all.
I think in this regard, we also like to point out that as the students grow older and know more about themselves, they also know how to enter into the instruction themselves. So, it's not always about the teacher having to do that work, but also allowing the student to self-guide their learning as well.
Yeah, thanks, Brian. I, I, that makes a lot of sense because we've talked about this before with, you know, when we talk about CELT, you know, we talk about the three-legged stool, the student, teacher, parent, and then bringing the fourth leg in of a community member or somebody outside that that whole thing. So, those are, and so, certainly, the student plays a big part.
It creates motivation and engagement. That's some of the data that's just too much here. But it also creates a great deal, when I know myself as a learner, and I think we all have experienced that, I know what I need from my learning, and I am more engaged in my learning.
Yeah. When, when, when you have a question, when you have a question you're trying to get an answer to, you, you work, at least you work harder instead of somebody just trying to force-feed you something that, I'm not interested in that. You know, I, I mean, I always, I've done that from a math point of view. Learning trigonometry is, is kind of painful from a book. But if you take a young man out and show him how to cut rafters, for some, that's a better way to learn. Okay. On the next slide, you talked about high impact. Shoot, I forget, I forgot how you said. I didn't get it written down fast enough. I don't know who briefed that next slide in the diversity, equity, inclusion, belonging with the definition.
Brian, I think that's mine, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay.
Sure.
Talking now. Okay. So, high-impact educational strategies are a specific term of what we know works from the evidence base. And I mentioned John Hattie's educational impact. So, we know, we've mentioned that in some of our other board presentations, but it really comes down to, we have an evidence base from research. impact. So we know, we've mentioned that in some of our other board presentations, but it really comes down to, we have an evidence base from research that says this strategy works. And that's what we mean when we say high impact. And we know that some things work faster and more specifically for a wider range of students. And so those three areas are really our focus in this presentation. And what we've realized are the areas we need to focus on as a leadership team in inclusionary practices and MTSS, our Culturey Responsive Teaching. And then something called Universal Design for Learning, and then overall, just the specially designed instruction that we provide students with disabilities.
And so are we talking, this whole presentation, there was more in your, in your talking portion, not the, the slides that we saw initially. I, I was thinking this is for all students, but you kind of keyed more on special ed students. Is this all or special ed or?
It's really for all, but some of the data that supports this further study of this work is kind of grounded in the special ed, least restrictive environment data, as well as our ELL data supports us moving this direction all as a school district. But yes, it supports all students. All students need different on ramps into the freeway of instruction, right? As we keep with that metaphor. But we do have some data that says we really need to improve in a couple of areas, right? So yes, that's why I've talked a little bit more about special ed. Because we have integrated special ed students and in some parts we have integrated ELL students, but we have not really made it an inclusive instructional environment for both those groups. So they may be part of a classroom, but they're not necessarily included in that instruction, so to speak.
Okay, okay. I, you know, you know, several different job sites that I've worked on, we've, we've brought people with learning disabilities in to be work experience. And it's been amazing, you know, when they felt included, you know, and sometimes they weren't doing what I would consider the most fun task in the world. Sometimes it was pretty mean. But you know what? They felt part of the team.
Right. It was their on ramp into the work. Right.
Yeah. Okay. The, the next picture was the, I don't know whether they're cherry trees or apple trees or, and, and the kids or students on boxes. What's, what's the goal here with this slide? To, what, what are you, what are you trying to tell me?
Go for it, Michaela.
Thank you. It's got to hold me back right now, everyone, because I really want to talk a lot about this. But so Paul, this Director Wegman, this really looks at exactly the issue that you brought up a few comments previously in terms of the difference between equal outcomes or equitable education for our students. So not all students need the same box to make sure that they're reaching for that. I choose, I'm a Washington, I approve apple tree for these. So we, we need something different and that's equity. Right? Equality means I'm all going to get the same thing, but you see what the outcome to that is with the slide. Some students are easily accessing picking that apple and several are still not there. So to really truly get our, all students what they need, we need to take an equitable education stance. And do that with our tools that our teachers have in their toolbox. Do that with our classrooms. So every student that is here in my classroom, we're going to make sure that you get what you need, all students.
All students.
You, you know, so some of the people I listened to, like Thomas Sewell, you know, the, the black economist that, you know, 80 years old now. He talks about that. Some of his friends say the same thing, that one of the biggest things we could do to help some of our minority students is to teach them to read, you know, and that some of those guys are saying, and teach phonics, you know, we should, we should really, you know, it's a proven method. And the, you know, so when children, and I've learned from all of you since I've been on this board that you get to third grade and you're not reading, life is not good. Life is not good for you for the future. And so long range success. And so the, the challenge is, is how do we make sure that, you know, all our students read and and, and that's how these boxes mean to me. When I talk to people in the community, you know, I, I, I don't know if I have my numbers 100% straight here, but when you, when a kid shows up at kindergarten or child ends up at kindergarten, and they've come from a home where the parents have read to them, they know on the order of 3,000 words or something like that is what I've been told. If you come from a home where the parent, children haven't been read to, they know 1,500 words. So now you've, you've put the teacher at a great disadvantage because she can only use half the words. And, and so, you know, how do we, so the question is, is how do we get our children, you know, how do we put the little bit bigger box under those for the ones that are behind? How, how do we do that? But yet some people are fearful that while we're helping those that are behind, we'll let the others students that are, know the 3,000 words, they don't progress. And so how, how do we solve some of those problems? What are your thoughts in that area?
So I think the one that I'll pipe in a little bit, if that's okay. I think what we've done pretty well at the, at the primary grades is how we've worked out the master schedule so that our kids that need that extra time are actually getting that within the day. And that's what's been helpful with kind of our, our tiered process. So our kids that need some extra one-on-one or small group instruction, that's built into the master schedule so that they receive that during the day. And early screening, right? So we do, we do a lot of early screening, first thing in kindergarten. So we use our walk kids and our STAR data to understand right away who our kids are that may need that extra, that extra support early on. And because we know the earlier, you know, it's prevent, it's, it's prevention and not intervention. We want to, we want to shoot for prevention. And so if we can look at that data early on and provide those in-class supports, we've gotten really good at that in Clover Park.
Okay.
And I think that's all about, it's a lot about logistics and pragmatics, right? It's a lot about that master schedule and how we work that. And our administrators have done a wonderful job to, to build that in the day.
And a universal design process includes what do my students that already know this need to extend their learning? It's the same process, but it's part of the system of designing that lesson.
So then when we go to your next picture is that the evolution of inclusionary practices, you know, so in, in, in a sense, the, your, your whole practice that you briefed us on today is you've got students bouncing around to different circles during the day. It's not, you, you, we're not just trying to get to the very end where, you know, again, you know, I've told the story about my dad. He showed up in a one-room schoolhouse and, and he was five grades behind when he started and graduated on time. So he completed eight grades in five years. And, and they, but back then, and when he was, and this was in 1924, they did, they had to take a statewide test before they could go to high school. And in his county, he was the top student in his county, you know, going backwards. And he didn't even speak English when he started. So he was an English language learner in a one-room schoolhouse. So the inclusionary, so when I see this, that's kind of the message it was sending to me on this slide. But you, but what you're saying is, is you're still breaking because one of the things that I was briefed on when I came on this board is that you, you break the students into groups, the ones that are trailing behind, the ones that are probably on grade level and the ones that are ahead. And then you, your teacher figures out plans to work with each one. And so that's what you're saying you're doing now in this inclusionary practice.
It may not be as much the teacher reaching out all the time as the student knows, different entry points into that same learning. So we were talking about this earlier, like if it's a particular novel study in an English class, it may be a book on tape, right? Is that the way for the kid to actually enter into the instruction, right? So they're hearing the same novel as somebody else who's reading it or somebody else is looking at the movie version of it, right? So there's different ways for you to engage a conversation. It increases your vocabulary. You can add discourse with the other students in class, but you're not limited because you're not having, not everyone just has to read the book. Right? The, the novel in front of us is not the only way to engage in this instruction.
And to echo on what Director Jacobs was asking, that idea that, you know, we, we give kids access to their, their grade level peers for that academic language. And so they're not leaving the room for everything because when I was a building principal, I would see the same kids that were walking the halls constantly going maybe to their, their special education instructional time or their ELL instructional time. So everything was happening outside of them being with their grade level peers. And so they never had access to that higher level academic language that they could have been provided. Because what we know is that some kids, just because they perhaps read at a third grade level, for whatever reason, they don't think at a third grade level. And so how do we allow them to have those higher level critical thinking, rigorous kind of exposure, but then meet their reading needs is, is superintendent, deputy superintendent, blah, blah, was saying, so.
And the multi-tiered system, that bouncing between the circles, we didn't really do a slide specifically on what those tiers mean, but that's exactly what multi-tiered means. I'm moving through the tiers of instruction, of intensity, based on what I need. So while you have access to that novel, we're going to make sure we're still make, giving you time to work on your reading level.
Okay, okay. Well, and my last question would be on, on the slide, measuring inclusive practices. I, you know, my engineering, I was trying to follow the arrows, but it, it just didn't compute for me. So I, I'm, I'm a slow learner here. You got to help talk me through that slide one more time, please.
Okay. So it's an iterative process is why those arrows go between. Because we start with one and we move the other, but then we realized as we were looking at just the outcome data for that original grant, both the WASA and WASDA grants and the OSPI grant, that yes, we were looking at outcome data and then trying to intervene at the outcome data level like our least restrictive environment or some of our academic achievement assessments. And what we really needed to do is look globally overall at our systems and our structures to be able to impact those. But then the idea would be to roll that arrow into the next arrow as while we work on those systems, the policies, the practices, the procedures, they're all going to link to then eventual improvement in those areas that we started looking at that were of concern. Does that help? It's, it really should be an iterative arrow and I can work on the graphics on making sure that we go around the circle because that's really what.
So in a sense, it's a double-headed arrow. It's going.
Exactly. That might be a better way to do it.
Okay, that's what, that's what confused me.
I see.
Okay, thank you. That, that's my engineer.
My pleasure.
Causing a problem for you. Sorry.
No.
All right. Thank you so much. I, I do appreciate what you've shown us here. It made sense to me.
Carol?
Clarification, I think I'm, this is also to clarify some data that's confusing. When the state implemented all-day kindergarten, first they put it into schools that were academically in a greater need. And we found that students quickly, much quicker than they even thought equaled. There are students who had had higher language skills and had preschool. Now that the state has all, has all-day kindergarten for all students, haven't we found that the the sense of, you know, kids who come from a poor background with less language and less, less words that really has leveled out and isn't really no longer the issue that it was prior to all-day kindergarten? It's just for clarification that that really isn't the issue that it was prior to all-day kindergarten. Is that accurate?
Um, I'm not exactly sure, but I will, I, I can, I can certainly follow up with you or, you know, with Superintendent Banner and get that information to you. What I would say about all-day kindergarten, right, is what we found is that all of our kids, it benefits all of our kids. And it gives us, it just flat gives us more time with kids and it helps the teacher to, again, provide that early literacy support for those, certainly those kids that need it, but all of our kids, and particularly as we're going into these high-stake tests earlier and earlier with kids.
Well, I just heralded that gap of showing where the halves and the halves not at a much faster rate. And it is not the glaring gap, especially at the third grade level, that gap that flows essentially.
Absolutely. Yes.
That's accurate?
I would believe that's accurate, but I'm going to find out for sure and, and, and follow up.
Well, I do appreciate the state making that happen because I know that's really made a difference for our kids. It has made a huge difference for our elementary schools.
Oh, I, I shared last week this, the story of the keynote speaker for the NSBA Equity.
Paul?
Hold it up there. The, is that better now? So Carol, the, the keynote speaker for the NSBA Equity Symposium that was done about a month ago now, that, that young man there, you know, he was all the way into college and still wasn't able to read. And it wasn't until his college professor worked with him to be able to read. And, and now he's taking, he's a, he's a teacher, taking students to Harvard to be in debate teams and, and you know, his team went from, and he has a different cohort every year, but you know, one of his cohorts, they, they showed up at Harvard and they went undefeated, undefeated. And it, it was pretty amazing. But his main point is, is if we don't help people learn to read, it's, it's a, it's a big issue. To me, it should be number one of, of what we're doing at this point, at least from my perspective.
Anthony?
Thank you guys for the, for the wonderful report, presentation. I, I had a question on, so this is more than just regards to, to reading, correct? This is for any subject that, that a student may be having difficulties with. Okay. Thank you. And then of course, with, with that, you had mentioned too, that taking the student out of maybe the fourth grade, when, when that individual is at a third grade reading level, they're actually continuing to be with their peers. Is that correct?
Yes, that would be the model, right? I would stay with my fourth grade cohort.
Excellent, excellent. That, that is wonderful news. I think that is very important so that they can still have their community and, and not feel any, any type of judgment as far as, oh, well, I have to go to a different class because of my reading or, or writing skills. I think that is a very motivating to, to help speed up the process as well. I, I suppose when, when it comes to difficulties, let's say reading, are, are there different assignments then? Or, or, or how do we signify the, the difference there?
A lot of our instructional materials have different ways to meet students, meet students where they're at within that, that classroom. You know, it's also about that design. I think we've said it a couple of times about that universal design of that lesson. Can there be different ways for students to enter into the learning, right? So that's given at that time. We've actually been trying to practice it as instructional directors ourselves, right? When we present stuff, how do we provide different ways for people to enter into the conversation, right? Not just a PowerPoint, but is there a video, a blog, different readings that you can look at that would engage you in the learning?
Excellent. Thank you again for the report and I think this is fabulous work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I can't, I don't know. Alyssa, did you have any comments that you wanted to make on this?
I don't. I'm sorry. I'm trying to juggle my one week old to apologize for everyone that is, I'm going off camera, on camera.
We'll say that you're modeling differentiated instruction wonderfully. Then the other, the thing that I wanted to comment on is one of the slides are really, there are two slides that really spoke to me visually. And one was that, one on the evolution of inclusion. And I love the integration, segregation, separation, really, and then how you integrate. And then the beauty of seeing the many color dots within the same sphere as opposed to little segments and pockets of all dots to the same color. And obviously, when we really do have an opportunity to have holistic learning, where we're really learning from each other's gaining perspective and insights, it's so dynamic. And I felt like that the slide really illustrated that. And it also, I, for me, put in some of the concern of what happens when it's not truly integrated. And then, you know, when, when you separate, in my mind, everybody loses, right? And so sometimes we might need to do things to bring folks up to speed. I get that. And so I, I can appreciate the ability to also allow each and every one of us to be engaged. Allow each and every one of us to be engaged in coming up to speed and learning from one another is what I'm really appreciative of that. And then the other um slide that really meant a lot to me too was the one on. The uh inclusionary uh practices in terms of where we said diversity is a fact. He said equity is a choice. He said inclusion is an action. And I really loved the the last statement because I've heard people say that you can't guarantee outcomes, you know? And if belonging is the outcome, if we can't guarantee that, then man, that's kind of sad to me. Everybody belongs. They really do. And and if that's, that is an amazing outcome. And then to the earlier point in terms of community, I mean, student engagement. If they, if a student can see the value of education at some point, he or she's going to really learn how to manage structures for their own benefit of education, right? And so we don't want to lord it over people that you have to be engaged at some point. We love seeing an individual being a student literally taking the responsibility to manage an education. Uh, that's going to work for her himself and the power of that, the powers that we're creating advocates for education instead of people being educated. And so, again, I think that that belonging as the outcome is a critical mass to seeing people engaged. And I also appreciated you bringing up the John Hattie scale, which uh we know the data supports it. There's, it's just, it's not disputable. In that when you feel believed in, when you feel that somebody cares, when you belong, your level, your ability to engage, be empowered and perform is all in hand. So those truths were also in your presentation and I just appreciated each and every one of those. And I I also um was glad to uh see the inclusion in terms of, you know, special ed, special needs, ELL, the whole gamut. As opposed to just one segment of the way that other people wanted to find inclusion. So thank you for that report.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you, team, for an excellent presentation. Board, we're now going to um. Do a little bit of a catch up in terms of updating you on current status of our return to in-person learning. Um, I am very excited to say or reiterate, because you've seen this in board briefs, that we um started with our middle school. Um hybrid learning last week and um. Today, we're um concluding that phase with seventh grade, so now sixth, seventh and eighth grade in are engaged in in-person hybrid learning and began today with ninth grade. Um, I'll take no more thunder from Deputy Superintendent Brian La Ba's uh presentation and allow him to give you the update on where we are currently.
All right. Well, thank you again for the opportunity to present an update on our return to learning plan. I do have um Megan Ekin and Tess McCarthen to talk about elementary small group and um their return to learning at elementary level. Uh Kevin Akata is going to discuss secondary instruction and athletics and then Rick Ring is going to wrap it all together at the end about transportation, safety and nutrition services. Again, this is really kind of the overview of what we're going to talk about tonight, um our six stages of return. Elementary being back, and really, we just talked about this the other day back for over a month. Um, secondary getting into full swing, um our status of athletics, food distribution, safety protocols. And at the end, I'm going to just talk a little bit about progress report that we submitted to OSPI at first of March. So as you know, we've always been guided um by our uh return to learn, six stages of return to learning, which wasn't um. Really, um, we got the information from the Department of Health uh back in December about the levels of high, moderate, low. Uh, we are definitely well into the moderate range right now, um well below uh the 200 level, which has allowed us to bring um high school students back. Um, and hopefully we can continue on the downward um piece here and get into the low pit uh range. Um, less than 50, but right now we're above 100 and uh, it was 160 roughly where we are today. Um, cases per 100,000, but this has been our guide. Um, we've been using this since um. We put it together again in December with updated information. And um that has allowed us to look at the return of elementary students, uh the return of um middle school students and now the return of high school students. We use it originally um for the return of our special ed students in early October. So Tess.
Good evening. Uh, we just have a couple of slides for elementary, so I'll be sharing those uh information about those and then Megan will be available for questions. Uh, we are very pleased. We've had a very successful transition to the in-person hybrid learning. Families who chose hybrid have their students coming two days a week and then the students do asynchronous learning the other two days. With check-ins and small group learning on Wednesday. And this next slide, please change slides, will show the schedule for hybrid and virtual. You can see the two day, it's a little busy, but if you look at the top, you can see the two person uh hybrid schedule and then the Wednesdays like I shared. And then uh you can see at the bottom, the 100% virtual option, which has students participating in live lessons with their teacher four days a week. And the A and B groups are broken up morning and afternoon, so their schedules are the same. And then Wednesdays are similar to their um to the other kids that are back um hybrid and it's asynchronous and small group learning. Um, for all, for virtual and hybrid students. Slide. We um really reflected on the process of of why it went so well and we attribute the successful transition that the elementary schools had to a few things. Uh, the tremendous amount of time principals and staff put into planning and preparing for the multitude of procedures and safety precautions that were necessary. Um, I don't want to call them false starts, but we had a few um dates, you know, it was going to be September, October, and so they were geared up. And and at the end, that turned out really well. Uh, we also attribute to the collaboration uh between the district departments and the school buildings. The ongoing and uh multiple methods of communication with families. And like I said about the um the different start dates, the multiple dress rehearsals that principals and staff did. And that was really resulted in a smooth start. We did um talk, we were talking, we always collaborate with Kevin, and so some considerations we passed on to our secondary leaders were. Uh, to perhaps if they could have more transition time for teachers, uh because we did have that getting those ready, but more time would have been uh. Would have been nicer for them. And we also suggested spacing out the return dates for grade levels. It worked out fine uh the way we did it, but if you could have a day or two between, it would allow uh for more systems to be kind of put in place with that grade level. And students and teachers to have more success before you onboard on some more. And then, like I said, with our success, we really um encouraged continued collaboration with district departments and over communicating. Um, expectations and guidance to all stakeholders in in multiple ways um to be sure that that message um gets out. And the two-way communication between families and and schools as well. I don't know if you want uh questions now or you're going on. Okay.
I think I'll do questions to Tess.
Perfect.
So um, as you know, we have had special ed students in since October 1. Um, we've also had some early childhood um special ed students as well as uh E cap and that start preschool students as well. Um, with this additional uh bringing in general ed students in, we've allowed more peer-to-peer interactions as well. At students to follow their schedules um more closely at the secondary levels. Um, we did also during this time from early October till uh February, bring in small groups of students. Uh, maybe ELL students or students who were having engagement um struggles with uh technology. Um, to also provide service to them, but uh that was really in small groups up until we moved to the return of our elementary students. Kevin?
So today was a great day for high school learning. We started our ninth graders today. And by March 15th, we'll have pre K 12 all in school in some fashion. The high school students will have all virtual learning in the morning and then onsite learning in the afternoon. Uh, Wednesdays will be virtual learning for all students. Uh, so on a Monday and Friday, we will be doing periods one through four, Tuesday and Thursday, periods five through eight. And students will be on site from 10:50 to 2:00 PM and buses will begin picking up students at 10:00 AM. The middle school learning options. We began instruction on March 1st with sixth graders, on March 4th with eighth graders. And then uh today, March 7th graders. As we shift to hybrid, that means the students will participate on an A B schedule. Students will alternate days for in-person learning. Most students will participate in two days of in-person learning and three days of online independent learning at home. Some families have chosen to have their students remain 100% virtual. On Monday and Fridays, they will have periods one through three, Tuesday and Thursday, periods four through eight. And on Wednesdays, the schedule remain the same. Students will be on site from 11:50 to 3:15 PM and buses will start picking up students at 11:00 AM. What you see is a sample schedule uh of in-person learning for a group A students at Hutloch, Lockburn and Thomas. Similar schedules have been developed and posted to the district website for Lakes, Clover Park and Harrison Prep on our return to learning website.
Kevin, you muted yourself.
Sorry about that. And going back to, this is our virtual model uh for Hutloch, Lockburn and Thomas. And similar schedules have been developed and posted for Lakes, Clover Park and Harrison Prep on the return to learning page. Some of the highlights of our hybrid versus remote. Students will attend in hybrid in-person learning Monday and Thursday or Tuesday and Friday. When there's not, when they're not attending in person, they will be working asynchronously online in school. The remote students will be taking online training in the morning with their teacher. And time is built in the schedule for virtual students to connect with their teachers during the school day and also after the school day. And Wednesdays will all be uh connecting with all their teachers virtually. Per the WI guidance on January 22nd, 2021, the district navigated all of the guidance along with two leagues to begin high school athletics on February 1st. The WI developed these seasons with minimal participation rates to get to postseason play. Pulse season in this schedule is basically a league championship. In each season, there are high, medium and low risk sports. Guidance has been provided on how to conduct each sport. Currently, there's no phase provided by the governor in which basketball and wrestling and competitive dance and joke can compete. What sports occur will be dependent on both the phase a region is in and what the league is able to do. Currently, Pierce County is in phase two. If the county were to move to phase one, we may have to bring back high-risk and modest sports. Uh, into a practice space. In order to participate, students must compete the, complete the athletic packet online. And a reminder that Lakes is in the Pierce County 3A League and Clover Park is in the South Pegeta Sound 2A League. Both leagues have determined not to have spectators at events. But events are broadcasted on the NFHS network. You can click uh your student's school for more, check with your student's school for more details. There's a monthly subscription to view live stream video for $10.99 cents. At the middle school, we decided to go an intermural program focused on the four pillars of participation rather than competition. They will focus on long lifelong learning, collaboration, character and leadership. Students, athletes will still have to uh fill out their online form and present a physical within the last 24 months. In-person students will participate on the day they are present and virtual students will be assigned specific days for participation. Competition right now will focus on inner squad activities. There will be two seasons uh for the intermurls. And again, the students will participate on the day that they are present and our virtual students will be allowed to participate, uh be assigned two days of participation. And all students will have to develop the online packet uh on Skyward family access. We are looking forward to start intermurls on March 11th.
Rick?
For transportation, students are greeted by one of our wonderful classified employees, their bus driver, when they get on the bus. Once on the bus, they're going to see uh COVID re- COVID 19 reminders, uh signs regarding the importance of washing their hands and wearing masks. Their bus driver will have a mask on and if a student doesn't have a mask on, have a mask. And one will be provided by our bus drivers. Students uh will have assigned seats. Um, we will be grouping students with siblings whenever possible. Um, the front row of the bus, left and right side will actually be left vacant to allow space between the driver and the students. Um, buses are cleaned and disinfected throughout the day. Uh, and the front and rear roof hatches, which are emergency roof hatches, but also serve as ventilation uh for the bus. Will be open to allow to increase the air airflow through the bus uh while they're operating. Next slide, safety protocols. Um, our safety protocols are designed to protect staff and students and this includes increased daily cleaning, disinfecting of high to high traffic areas, doors, countertops. And places that are uh high touch points and very public as as well as horizontal surfaces. Restrooms and health offices are wiped down and disinfected twice daily at least. Uh, we are now using a UV light uh system to disinfect larger areas. Uh, these are our, the robots that the board approved previously. Currently, our playgrounds remain closed. However, as you heard from Assistant Superintendent Akata, we have started our competitive athletics programs. Um, during these times, they are required to wear a mask as well and maintain social distancing when not on the field. We continue to uh maintain high awareness regarding personal hygiene and hand washing. Signs are played, have been placed in all classrooms and sinks and restrooms. We have added additional hand washing stations in some locations and hand sanitizers available throughout the building. Water fountains are available for water, water bottle filling. These are disinfected periodically through the day. We also um have a paper cup dispensers for for use with students that don't have water bottles. However, parents, we encourage parents to send water bottles uh with their students if they have concerns about using the refill water bottle stations. Each classroom has guidelines as well as supplies for cleaning and desks and and tables. And staff members clean and sanitize high-touch areas throughout the day. Next slide. Um, nutrition services. USDA has provided a waiver for the 2020 or 2020, 21 school year that allows school districts to continue the uh summer feeding program. That allows us to feed the community both lunch and breakfast. This allows us to provide a free breakfast and lunch to all children ages 18 and younger. These meals are available at any one of our meal distribution sites Monday through Friday and you can find these sites on our website. In addition to the daily distribution, we uh we are offering a preorder option for a five-day meal plan for families who have trouble getting to the daily pickup locations. This option is distributed out of Lakes High School and Clover Park High School. Um, again, you can get information on this uh preorder uh on our website. This does require a preorder. Uh, that needs to go through our nutrition services department, not through the individual schools. Currently, we are serving about 6,000 meals a day district wide. Um, this is significantly less than what we provide during a a regular school day, which is around 13,000 meals per day. Any additional information on our meal program again is available on the district website.
Thank you. So just recently, we submitted a progress report on our return to learning um to OSPI. This was required um by the House Bill 1368 and part of our ability to draw down S or $2, um which have been recently been um released. Um, OSPI will approve your uh return to learning plan. And then uh you'll be able to submit for any costs related to. And then you'll be able to submit for any costs related to returning to onsite instruction. So in this report, we reported on the district, just what you heard about our health and safety planning. Any training that we've done with staff, what we've done around communication with families, with staff as well. And then they look for some data participation that weekly I submit a plant or data on how many students are participating on onsite instruction. They want you to make sure that you continue to do that. And then kind of part five, the final part was really about how are we thinking about academic recovery? We do plan to bring to you at a workshop in April. Where we are in our academic recovery planning, we're hopeful that O S P I will produce the plan, planning tool. The first part of April so that we can get that filled out and share that with you. As in order to collect on S R three dollars, we have to have a academic recovery plan approved by the board by June one deadline. So that means at the May board meeting, we'll be bringing a resolution to you to approve our academic recovery plan. So at this point, we can answer any questions that you have.
Couple of things, um. Do we have to be at phase one before the playgrounds for the elementary school kids are open? Because I know some of the parks have playgrounds open and I was kind of surprised at public parks that the schools work.
The counties in phase two. Really, we have no guidance from Department of Health about opening our playgrounds to student use at this point.
Okay, so anyway, you know what, I want to say whoever put this together and Brian, I think this was the group that was put, you know, that you got the kudos on the news brief today because this is absolutely incredible. Good, you know, engineers probably, I'm just so impressed with all the detail, all the work for every kid and how it's right for them. I can't imagine the time and the hours that went into this. I do want to, and this is kind of a story that I'm sharing. Many of you know that I have two kids, two grandkids in the district and they've been out. When it came time to sign up to go back to school, my daughter just wasn't comfortable with putting them back in yet. Now, as this is proof that she's the parent and I'm not because I would have had him there, but she said, no, they're her kids. I had to go along with it. About two weeks ago, her first grade, Dawn Donna, her first grader just was just giving her a little kickback, not just not engaged. And the reality is he's never been to that school. He doesn't really know how to be in school. He really, you know, as far as he was concerned, if you know something, there was something better to do, he wanted to go do it. And so mom and child began to battle a little bit. So we talked a little bit about it and I did ask what was the, what was the procedure for a parent who chooses to go back to school once they've said no? And, you know, so she called the principal and said, is there room? And I did tell her, if there's no room, you gotta find, you know, they can, will take you someplace. It may not be homeschool, but it may, or the school they're supposed to be, but they'll take it. As it turned out, there was room. And he was very anxious. He didn't, he'd never been to the school. He didn't have any friends there. He was concerned about leaving home. All the anxiety and things that people have talked about with these kids. And so she spent a lot of time with him explaining, it's only two days a week. He goes, what are you guys going to do without me? It was because the fourth grader is staying at home. It's working really well for her. She's got a very good teacher on the virtual school. It's working well. So she is in fact staying home with this first grader. So they calmed him down, took him to school. The principal was so informative and helpful and realizing that he had never been there. She greeted him on that first day. I in fact picked him up. It was a long day for this little first grader who's been having a really kind of a good time at home. When I asked him questions, he couldn't remember anything. He was tired. He'd had a long day. So I just want to congratulate this district for one, putting this thing together and making it work for all families. I'm so impressed that in fact, on a very personal basis, it certainly worked for my family. And I don't think my family was treated differently than anybody else's family because my daughter's the one that had all the interfacing with the school and they handled it. They were glad to receive him. They had a place for him. It's just been really good. So kudos, kudos, and thank you to the school district for making it work for all kids. And like I said, her fourth grader is at home still and will stay at home because it's working well. The first grader, he needs to come back to school. He'll be there tomorrow. And, and as the day went on and he had a little nap, then he was able to talk about things. He did want to go out and play on the playground because it looked like pretty cool stuff out there and it was all roped up and he wanted to go out there. But thank you so much for all the effort put forth to make it work for our families. You did a, you've done a phenomenal job.
Well, Superintendent Banner, it looks like we are through with our question and comment period. And so again, I think you hear the board saying, thank you for all the effort and work that you've gone in. Of course, and it's not just for this report, it's to set our students up for success. I think, so thank you. We will now, unless Ron, was there anything else you wanted to share in that area?
Nope, that concludes our reports this evening.
Board, let's go ahead and move to the consent agenda. That being the case, we have consent agenda items number twenty-one dash zero eighty-six to twenty-one dash zero ninety-five. Is there a motion made by Paul Wagaman? Is there a second? Made by Alyssa Pearson. So all those in favor, please raise your right hand. And motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Goren. We'll now move to our individual action items. The first individual action item is twenty-one dash zero ninety-six, which is adoption of policies that we've been reading. And so we need to also get a motion for that, looking for one. Motion made by Carol Jacobs, seconded by Anthony Velez. So the motion has been made and seconded and Superintendent Banner, I know we've read these, we've been briefed, but would you share concern the adoption of policies?
Yes, so this action would approve the language in policy six two two zero bid requirements and policy six two three zero relation with vendors. The board has been briefed on both policies during agenda reviews for both first reading and second reading. Six two two zero bid requirements. WASDA has updated this model policy to reflect the new federal guidance. Allowing school districts to set the threshold for micro purchases without seeking bids up to fifty thousand dollars. If the school district meets certain requirements such as being identified as a low risk during the most recent audit. O S P I has issued guidance stating that the district, that a district that wants to use the higher micro purchase threshold must revise this policy accordingly, which is what this action does. In policy six two three zero relations with vendors, this policy, this policy and language allows the district to accept third-party receipts. For example, in ticket sales at athletic events, before the district enters into third-party receiving contracts, the board must adopt language in policy that allows permit. That allows and permits crowdfunding and third-party receiving. This policy does that. I do recommend approval of this policy. Excuse me.
Board, any questions or comments to the superintendent on twenty-one oh ninety-six? Not seen any. I'll call to vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. And motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We'll now move to twenty-one oh ninety-seven, which is the recommendation for a school bus purchase. Is there a motion made by Paul Wagaman and seconded by Anthony Velez? He just, his arm was just barely moving there. So and then Superintendent Banner, would you speak to twenty-one oh ninety-seven, please?
Yes, this action approves the purchase of nine school buses. The funding for this purchase will come from the thirteen annual O S P I transportation depreciation payments. Transportation budget has a line item for school bus replacement, which is where these payments go. These dollars can only be used for the purchase of yellow school buses. I do recommend approval of this action.
Or I know, again, we've all been briefed on these. We've been doing this as a practice for years in terms of keeping our school bus purchases up to date and moving them through in a way that shows financial. You know, responsibility. But is there any other questions from you, Paul? You're muted, Paul.
Sorry about that. The this, the difference what we've this time compared to the last couple of times is that we're reducing the number of buses we're purchasing. And so I think it, you know, as long as everybody's aware of that and understands that they're doing some efficiency things that will help us. I think Ron shared, we'll get more. We get some kind of efficiency rating or something like that. I don't remember the exact words now, Ron, but so it's a good thing that we're doing. And, and I've always been impressed with this program. We've managed it well and we have but good buses in good shape and they're running all the time.
So I can speak to that. I'm not sure if you were asking that question or just reiterating what we talked about in briefings, Director Wagman.
Well, I, it may be good so that people in the public can hear that. I think it's a good thing. It's we're managing our resources.
Certainly. So we are eligible through this program for fifteen school buses. We have a fleet reduction plan, which allows us to have a greater efficiency rating, which in the bigger picture allows us to have more during, when we get allocated dollars for transportation. We get more dollars when we are running at an efficiency rating that's higher. Because we have those buses, extra buses, so to speak, I'm putting quotes around extra. Our efficiency rating is lower and so we are, as part of our fleet reduction plan, only purchasing nine of the fifteen that we have available to us in terms of the depreciation payments. Does that capture what we talked about?
Thank you. All right. Not seen any further questions or comments. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. And motion carries unanimously as well. Thank you. We're now at the individual action item twenty-one dash zero ninety-eight, which is technology equipment purchase. Is there a motion? Made by Carol and seconded by Alyssa. Superintendent Banner, would you speak to this technology? And if you want, you can speak to all the, you know, any, any overlapping of the technology ones that you want to speak to, feel free to.
Certainly. So twenty-one oh nine eight, approval of this action item allows the district to purchase and install wifi equipment at eligible district sites to support student learning. This purchase is phase two of the project charter to improve connectivity for staff and students. The funding will initially come out of our capital projects budget with up to eighty percent of the cost being reimbursed through the E-rate competitive bid process. Once we do get reimbursement, that reimbursement would go back into the capital projects budget. I do recommend approval of this action.
Any further questions on twenty-one oh ninety-eight? All right, not seeing any. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. And motion carries unanimously as well. Twenty-one dash zero ninety-nine, the technology equipment purchase for the support of elementary students, looking for a motion. Made by Paul Wagaman, seconded by Carol. And then against Superintendent Banner, would you speak to this one, please?
Yes, approval of this action item authorizes the district to purchase laptop computers through our learning assistance program funds for next school year. These fun, these, these purchases will provide laptop computers for our first grade students. We have looked at the data and the learning around first grade at this point, and we believe that they are ready to move up to a laptop as opposed to a tablet. All of the tablets that we purchased will be used for our pre-K and kinder students. And again, this is one of those next year purchases that we really just need to jump on while supply is there. We found a company that had a supply of laptops of the type that we use that meet our standards. And so we really wanted to make sure that they're available for students when we start the school year in the fall. And so we did accelerate this. Normally it would be done later, but we want to make sure we can get those. So I do recommend approval of this part of this action item.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the board? Carol?
Will these be obviously issued out to our first graders? Will the first graders be transporting these laptops back and forth? Or will they be left at school and they use them at school?
No, we actually talked about that early on, Director Jacobs. And, and we initially said that our, our elementary students would not be transporting the laptops or their devices. And what we found is one that teachers really wanted them to do that and that they were able to take care of. When we teach them how to carry them and to do the right things, the kiddos do that. So we do have, you know, damage, et cetera, built into our planning, but for the most part, we believe because we're seeing it, that our kids can manage this. And so they will be taken back and forth as appropriate.
Okay. Good luck.
Paul?
I, I, I think this is another one like the buses where we're staying ahead of the curve and managing our resources as well. And, and as we can see right now, in this COVID situation where we've had to do remote learning and all that stuff, having electronic devices for all our students is important. So, you know, my hat's off to the IT department for working through this, the district, you know, because it just makes sense and it just, you know, puts us ahead of all our friends. I mean, our other district friends.
Not seen any further questions or comments. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. And then motion carries unanimously as well. Thank you, board. We will now go to matters of discussion for the board. We have a first reading. Want to remind everybody, I know that you had opportunity recently to hear an update on the S R O program. And now there's the official first reading of forty-three eleven. We saw the before and after. And so just reminding you of that. Any questions or comments on that? Go ahead. I see your hand, Paul.
Yeah. I, I understand where, what the legislature is trying to do here. I, I just struggle with the where is it? Did it change? I'm sorry, I'm, I'm looking at the wrong thing. I, I'm, let, let me read this again. If, if, if we have some changes, how's the best way to handle that?
Yeah, you just, I, I can barely hear you, but I can hear you, Paul. So Paul asked if he wanted to suggest a change, how does he handle that? Is that correct, Paul?
Correct.
And so the way that you would do that is you obviously get to put that in an email form. Mail to me will take to the superintendent and then weigh it out, pass it out to the board as well.
Yeah, the, the, the problem that I have is paragraph two. And unfortunately, from my perspective, that, that second paragraph, second sentence is almost a direct quote right out of the, the legislation. My, and the legislation doesn't tell us we have to put it in our second paragraph. I, I think we could be in compliance with the state's guidelines. If we put it at the end, the chances of it being read. And guess what I object to in that second sentence? It says, school resource officers should focus on keeping students out of the criminal justice system. I, I, I understand what they're trying to say there, but I think it weakens the police officer when people hear that, you know? If you don't think you're going to get arrested or, or get held accountable, you know? Superintendent Banner and I talked about it in agenda review. I mean, if, if somebody breaks the law, they're there and they're going to do something about it. But we could move it from the second paragraph into the later paragraphs and still be in compliance and maybe say something in there, you know, about how we appreciate our law enforcement officers working with us.
Paul, did you, did you view this when, in your work with the WASDA board at all?
No, I mean, we, we've talked about it, but no, I didn't, I didn't work on this one. I did, I did talk to the WASDA attorney about it. She says, we're kind of between a rock and a hard place. You almost have to have that statement in there because of the way the legislation is put together. Because it's a direct quote right out of the, the RCW and which, you know, I I get to, I said, next time I get to Olympia, I'll pound on our senator a little bit about that. I said, next time I get to Olympia, I'll pound on our senator a little bit about that. Why in the world they let that, that wording go through that way. But at least, again, that's my opinion, not our board's opinion.
No, I just wanted to check because it's, you know, the WASDA recommendation as well. And so just
And it is. Yeah, Abigail, the attorney for WASDA, she said, Paul, we're, we're kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place. The, the, those are, it's almost a direct quote right out of the RCW.
So Board, let's, you know, I've read the differences too. Let's all make sure we read them. Then obviously anybody that has any recommendations, send them in and then we will put it out for board voice. Then on our board member report, what I'd like to do tonight is to acknowledge that last week I was forced to be out of town because of work and I was not able to have Wi-Fi connectivity. I'm so grateful, Vice President Alyssa Pearson, for your leading the meeting. It, it is exciting for us to see you and Anthony step up and grow in your leaderships. You're so capable. But even more so, Alyssa, can I just tell you that I know you have a new child. So you have our youngest student ever at a school board meeting tonight. It's so impressive, Alyssa Pearson, your commitment and dedication to the school board. You, you haven't said a word. You, you literally just did it tonight. And so please hear me say that I'm really grateful for who you are and what you bring to this board. So that, well, I've done a lot of other things. That would be the mainstay of my board member report tonight. So thank you, Alyssa. And of course, what did I tell you in the brief that I sent out every other week? Thank you for all that you do. But you guys aren't going to get my shout out tonight because Alyssa just flat out. So anyway, thank you very much. And any other board member that wants to report? Go ahead, Paul.
Okay, get my mic up to my mouth. I just have kind of a note of sadness. Debbie Wenskill's husband died this week. And I don't know if you know Debbie Wenskill, she was on the Tacoma School Board for almost 30 years. So she's been a friend of all of us for the times we've been on the board. She, she served faithfully on the Tacoma School Board for all those years. And, you know, it did lots of things down at the, at WASDA also. So just a note of sadness from that perspective.
Carol, thank you, Paul. Carol?
Thank you for sharing that, Paul. I considered Deb and Eddie a friend. This is going to be very brief. I've been, I'm sure, I think you've been getting the notices that Caring for Kids is going to do a virtual auction. And I, I think they're accepting donations until the 31st of this month. And gosh, I just, I don't have the date. I was going through some of my, my back information on the exact date. I will get that to you and Marty, if you can put that out in the brief. Being that this year is a very different thing, and we know that these funds, 100% of these funds go to kids. And this is her main driver for the back-to-school fairs, which sets our kids up with haircuts, school supplies, books. I mean, the spiral notebooks, pens, pencils, backpacks, everything they need. So I think, I'm hoping that maybe I'll, we'll get the dates back to you. And we all need to dig a little deeper to be able to support Caring for Kids at this time. Because I, you know, when you're at the auction and things that go in and they've got the dessert thing, which raises money and everything else. So this year it's going to be just online virtual auction. And I'm just hoping that, that Diane can continue, Diane and her army can continue to support our kids. But she's only going to be able to support our kids if she receives the support of the community. I've made a couple of donations to her and, you know, and I hope that if you have things that you would, that new, new items that you would like to donate, she certainly could use those for her auction. So it's coming up. I think she's accepting things until the 30th of March. And, you know, Diane needs us because the kids need her. And it's just win-win situation for everybody. So that's my plug for Caring for Kids. And thank you, Diane, for all you do.
Okay, I guess I should say, are there any other reports or plugs? Go ahead, Anthony.
All right. Hello, thank you. I just wanted to give a quick update from the legislation session. We have actually been meeting with Charlie Brown, Marty, Ron and I. And it's just been a pleasure getting to know him. And we actually got some feedback from him and from the company. So here, here's the report I have for, for you all. So over the course of the last few months, we have been reporting on the public policy changes that this new legislative majority that has indicated it needs to be in pursuit. Many of those proposals are taking shape and are moving through the legislative process now. On the environmental front, the House and Senate signaled the seriousness for which it intends to regulate carbon emissions. This House passed HB 1091, the Low Carbon Fuel Standards Bill, on a vote of 52 to 46. The Senate moved SB 5126, the cap and investment, or invest bill, out of the state environment. Energy and Telecommunications Committee on February 25th. It is now pending in the Senate Ways and Means Committee and is considered necessary to implement the budget and therefore alive until the end of the session. We expect a legislation will be a long-term transportation funding proposal that will emerge in the coming weeks. The Senate also passed one of the most comprehensive plastics recycling bills ever. It expands requirements for the use of post-consumer plastics and beverages, containers, as well as household cleaning and personal care products. On the tax policy front, the Senate took action on the controversial capital gains tax proposal on Saturday. After more than four hours of debate, it passed on a vote of 25 to 24. We expect the House to pass it as well. If this legislation is signed into law by Governor Inslee, there will be a series of legal challenges as well as possible effort to repeal it at the ballot box through the referendum initiative process. In addition, both the House and Senate took up legislation addressing police use of force, environmental justice, and numerous other bills addressing social justice-related issues. They are also expected to implement a significant expansion of paid family leave, childcare, and early learning programs this year. Action to address economic recovery from the pandemic has already taken place. But we expect much more to come when the budgets are released later this month. Funding for those budgets will be aided by the capital gains tax, congressional action on the federal stimulus funding package, and the current overall strength of the state's economy. All in all, it is becoming clear that this legislation majorities are setting a path out to create a monumental sea change in environmental, social, and economic policy in this state. So the wonderful updates right there. We, we do have some, some issues with lead drinking water. So the HB 1121, the Emergency Graduation Waiver Bill passed through both the House and Senate and was delivered to the governor to be signed last Thursday. The bill also allows the State Board of Education, SBE, to authorize public and private schools to grant individual student waivers from graduation requirements due to the pandemic. Requires school districts to maintain records and report back to the SBE on waiver usage and directs the SBE to provide waiver data on the graduating classes of 2020 and 21 of the legislature. We have been told that the SBE has already taken or written the rules for implementing this law and intends to adopt them on or around March 10th. If districts are interested in commenting on the rules, they should be available on the SBE website. The lead in school drinking water bill continues to move in the legislature. The bill HB 1139 is now pending on the House floor calendar and could be taken up anytime next week. This bill still requires the Department of Health to test school building drinking water faucets and requires remediation by the school district if the tests show lead levels that exceed five parts per billion. This is a new and much more stringent threshold for lead level remediation than is required today. So the bill assumes funding in the state budget for testing by the Department of Health and for remediation grants for school districts. Concerns remain, however, over the adequacy of the remediation funding levels being proposed by the OSPI and the lack of required testing of the lead levels of the water entering the buildings from the local water pavers. If the lead levels entering the buildings is consistent with the current 15 parts per billion standard, then the lead levels in the schools will not be able to meet the five parts per billion threshold required by the proposal law. Please let us know if you think this new requirement will negatively impact your facilities. This is still time to request for more remediation funding or modify some of the requirements of the underlying bill. SB 5128, the student transportation funding legislation moved out of Senate Ways and Means Committee last week and should be acted upon by the Senate in the coming 10 days. The House moved HB 1476, the Student Enrollment Funding Bill of the House Appropriations Committee and should take action on it soon. As noted last week, the bill was substantially amended by Rep. Lori Dolan, stripping all but the local levy funding provisions. She did, she did so because the intent of both of the House and Senate is to include the short-term state enrollment funding waiver provisions in the supplemental and general operating budgets. The local enrichment levy provisions, however, require a policy statute change and therefore must be moved in separate policy bill. A few updates as well that I'd like to briefly go over on Friday, March 12th. The superintendent, and I will be meeting via Zoom to prepare for the WASDA week on the Hill. We will have meetings set for our legislators from the 29th District on March 17th and with the 28th District on March 18th to promote our legislative priorities. Any questions on, on these updates?
Paul?
What, what are we going to do on the lead thing? Because we, you know, I worked with our, our local water district, Lakewood Water District. We're, we're less than the five parts per billion for Lakewood. Unfortunately, we get water for several of our schools from On Base. They're a federal entity. A federal entity is probably going to stick with their 15 parts per billion. So that means we're between a rock and a hard place at this point in time. If we want to comply with the state on base, we're going to have to think about how we're going to do that. So that's the
Rick Ring is tracking the bill right now, Paul. And so we really won't know anything until it, if it makes it out of legislation, makes it into legislation. So we're monitoring and tracking it as we speak.
Yeah, I understand, you know, and do we get water, do we know if we get water from any other place? Is it just the base and a Lakewood Water District? Is that all we're getting?
That's correct, Paul. Basically, JBLM has a different water supplier and then Lakewood provides everything in this general area that we service.
So in Lakewood Water District, we're good. It's just the federal side that could be a problem to us.
Well, it's also our own, own pipe, pipes coming in and infrastructure into our own, from our, into our schools and here at schools.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Anthony, thank you for your comprehensive report tonight. Appreciate that. Thank you for stepping up as our legislative rep. And then look forward to having you continue to monitor and make us aware of things that we need to know. Superintendent Banner, I did not see need for an executive session tonight. Has anything changed? All right. And so that being the case, I would now look for a motion to adjourn made by Paul Wegman and seconded by Carol Jacobs. All those favoring to adjourn at 8:06 PM, please raise your right hand. And motion carried unanimously. Thank you very much, public. We appreciate you, teachers. And then of course, our amazing classified staff. Another shout out to all of you amazing folks. And then of course, Superintendent Banner to you and our district and board, thank you as well.